It's two. Two.
It's a two oh one, yeah?
Not two oh. Quick time, quick time.
Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jerem.
Here.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our invocation today, ladies and gentlemen, let me just say that being a Vietnam veteran myself and having to deal with a lot of the things that we had to deal with when we came back, it is an honor to have even watched Senator John McCain. It was an honor for those who worked with him to talk about him the way that they did. This was an individual who was about being able to cross the aisle, being tough when he had to be, being gentle when he had to be, but always recognizing that the good of the country was more important than anything to him, and it should be more important to all of us who are elected officials. And I just wanted a moment of silence today for a fellow Vietnam veteran who has passed on and gave a lot to this country. Thank you all for the moment.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We all thank you all for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you all to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six to ten relate to the same project and can be considered together for the townhomes of Village Point located southwest of 160th Street and Western Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District. Item seven in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R6 District. Item eight in ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district in R6 District and to approve the development plan. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat for the townhomes of Village Point. Item ten, a resolution to approve the townhomes at Village Point subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers six through ten of today proponents, please.
Afternoon. Jason Thielen with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, here on behalf of the applicant. This is the final plat, our final step to getting this project finalized. We've been before you before. We've addressed the issues with the property owner to the north, and all is good with this project. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve items six through ten, there are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through ten are approved, seven to zero. Item eleven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Wood Valley West Two, located north of Military Road and west of 147th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eleven is today proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is John Fulencamp. My address is 11440 West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant, Celebrity Homes, who are developing a ninety-six lot subdivision at 147th and Military. I don't know if we can see the drawing here, but this project completes this entire development as the last island. It's a long military road. It'll be ninety-six single-family lots. It will also facilitate the eventual closing of Military Road, which will then become a regional parkway, or excuse, yes, a regional trail. In the actual plat of that property, it looks like that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item eleven, there are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eleven is approved, seven to zero. Item twelve, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Slick Construction to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District located at 3327 Lindenwood Lane. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number twelve is today proponents, please.
Ray Plum with Slick Construction, General Manager. We basically complied with all necessary environmental plans for the area, and we intend to build a garage in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twelve is approved, seven to zero. Item thirteen, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by SNW Fence for a large project to allow total building floor area over forty thousand square feet for property located at 6726 North 87th Circle. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirteen is today proponents, please.
Randy Kuchak with Lanfer Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirteen is approved, seven to zero. Item fourteen, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Amerco Real Estate Company to allow automotive rentals in a CC Community Commercial District located at 5808 South 144th Street and 5801 South 147th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number fourteen is today proponents, please.
Hello, I'm Mike Hale, representing Amerco Real Estate, here to answer any questions you might have. My address is 6412 South 174th Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Mike, could you come to... Mike, just like to have you explain a little bit, because you're repurposing a Kmart?
Yes, the old Kmart building. We're repurposing it into 700 climate-controlled self-storage units.
And have you dealt with the Neighborhood Association?
We have. I've worked directly with the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, which is directly parallel to that property. Planted some trees in the back at their request on the berm that really hides the back of that property. I actually have helped them plant their island going into their neighborhood, and we'll be good neighbors, so...
I'm assuming, because right now you're currently located downtown Old Millard?
We're down in Old Millard now.
And you're going to keep that place also?
We'll keep that property running, yes.
I'm just curious, because there's an awful lot of parking space. Will that be part of your business up there? Will you extend out into that parking?
It just kind of comes with the building, so the box is the box, and that's what we're interested in, is providing self-storage for that community. One of the avenues to get that done, though, of course, is to provide trucks and trailers to the people in that neighborhood. Otherwise, we'll have a difficult time filling the units, so we will use the property. We presented a parking plan that the Planning Board has approved. We'll be respectful in that area.
Yeah, and I do thank you, because we do need to repurpose those buildings that are still good, but stay vacant too many years.
Yeah, that one's been vacant just long enough that we've been in there leasing it to just get a feeling for the property, and it's been a little bit of work to keep it, keep the riffraff out of the area. It wants to decline if you let it, so we won't let it decline if we're occupying it.
Thank, okay, thank you. I moved.
Moved approved. Second, no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fourteen is approved, seven to zero. Item fifteen, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Sippin' Sirens LLC doing business as Sippin' Sirens located at 4302 South 42nd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifteen is today proponents, please.
I am Angela Wolf with Sippin' Sirens at 4302 South 42nd Street.
Okay, and you're here to answer any questions we might have?
Here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. Sorry, Angela, I have to make you come back up for a second. I was looking through the application. I just want to ask you, you mentioned food. Is there food now, or you're going to have...
No, there is no food.
Okay.
No, if anything, it'll just be like bags of chips and beef jerky. No prepared food.
I have to ask you about the name. Tell me what that is.
So it's sirens. It's a mythical creature. It's a mermaid that is out at ocean, and they use their voice to lure sailors into, towards them, and they pretty much make them wreck their ship and eat them alive.
You had to ask.
I would say Pete and I just had that conversation this morning with his uncle. So, yeah, wow, amazing. If there's no more lights, move to approve.
Well, I don't know if they're going to lure sailors and all that. But moved and seconded to approve item fifteen, there are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifteen is approved, seven to zero. Item sixteen, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Tiny House LLC doing business as Tiny House located at 1411 South 13th Street. A's Communications and Opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixteen is today proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Tiny House. Per the name, this is a very small location on South 13th Street, approximately 900 square feet, so occupancy will be around 50. There will be an outdoor area on 13th Street on the west side, so not to interrupt the enjoyment for neighbors. One point of clarification, this is applied for as a Class C, which would allow for sale of package. The reason for that is this location will have some specialty wines and beers, which, you know, regular folks won't be able to find at your local liquor store or grocery store, so this gives an opportunity for patrons to take it home. We're not going to be, you know, it's not going to really be a package store, but just a complement to the regular service. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? If you want to come down, ma'am.
Mary Thompson, 1309 South 6th Street. I am president of the Dollman Neighborhood Association, part of the Mosquito Hill Gang. Our boundaries are 16th Street to the River Pacific to Martha. Inasmuch as the proposed tiny bar is probably one of many that will try to be opened on the 13th Street arterial, at this point in time, I personally do not feel the urgent necessity to grant a liquor license. In the growth process of the area being the first new bar on the street, the parking problem will be enhanced by the wonderful proposed revamping of 13th Street being pushed by the owners of this property. I guess that their vision is to try to be like Benson, Dundee, Blackstone, or even the old market. With seventeen thousand vehicles on the street and a limited amount of parking specifically allocated for the business, I think we should wait a while to put this kind of business into the location. My other issue is the qualifications of the person that they have indicated will be the manager. In checking the application, there is no indication that they have the knowledge and skills and abilities to do the job. There are certain certifications that the Nebraska Liquor Control Board recommends that managers obtain. It was indicated this certification will be submitted when completed. Having been in the bar business for over twenty-five years in the Omaha area, I realize that times have changed, but for some reason I do not feel comfortable turning over the management of this type of business to someone that has a limited amount of experience doing management, regardless of the size of an eight-hundred-square-foot bar. Yes, there's lots of change on 13th Street, but we have gotten along with more than one bar for several years, and maybe we could get along without one for several more. Maybe another full-service restaurant, but just not a bar with a novice running it. Thank you. Therefore, I oppose this motion.
Thank you. Are there any more opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue.
First question that I wanted to ask you was a question that others had in terms of the operation of the business and where people will park and driving by it. Yesterday, I noticed there's a Little Bohemia sign out in front of the building, which suggested to me that this is a part of the overall redevelopment project that's been going on in that area, led by primarily a group of people working together. Is this a part of that same group?
That's correct, and there is common ownership between this application and the redevelopment team, so naturally that does allow them to have access to parking, both on the north side, which you referenced, and also on the west side.
So the same group that's investing millions into redeveloping this corridor will have shared ownership with this business?
That's correct, in which this council's approved tax increment financing for the same project.
So they have every incentive, if they're making this kind of investment, to make sure that the type of businesses that go in there are well-organized, managed, operated, and supervised?
Yes, they have plenty of incentive for that.
Is the Little Bohemia Development Team with this project specifically providing for shared access for parking?
Yes.
Does it include the old Bohemian Cafe parking lots that are right there on the corner?
It does, approximately 100 stalls.
Okay. And this business will have the right to have their customers park, not just on 13th Street, but in that, in those lots?
Absolutely.
Okay. In terms of the package side of this operation, you said that the applicant was just going to have the specialty craft beer offerings or wine offerings available for people to purchase and not a package store, so to speak. Can you, you can confirm that for the record?
That's correct, and any restrictions you want to place on the licensee to make sure that this package privilege doesn't go beyond to provide for, you know, alcohol consumption and public, we're happy to accommodate.
Will there be any off-sale, off-site package sales of 50-milliliter distilled spirits, we call them airplane shots?
Absolutely not.
Will there be any outdoor music?
No.
Will there be hours of operation, typically late afternoon to midnight, one in the morning sort of thing?
Yep, they intend to be closed Sundays, 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday.
Who is the customer that this type business is trying to attract?
So the business model is really, really a neighborhood-type atmosphere that really would attract all walks of life. The theme, if you will, is more of an art theme, where they'll allow local artists to, on a monthly basis, design the space to promote their art and their craft. So it'll have a little bit of a unique specialty feel, and at the same time, it'll be a casual, blue-collar, you know, pint location as well.
Will the business join the Neighborhood Association and establish regular communication supporting the organization?
Given the ownership group's commitment, I can't imagine that would be a problem.
In terms of the training of who will be managing this operation, have you gotten to the point where you'd be appointing the manager and the manager going through the certified training course yet?
Yeah, so the manager does have years of experience in the hospitality interest. It's really common practice for new applicants that have a managerial position within a license to put on the application for training as, you know, will complete upon issue of the license, and if they don't, it's really standard practice for the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to require that within 90 days. So required training is going to happen really on our own, but it would be required anyhow.
I had someone ask me, there won't be any drive-up type to-go business there, will they?
Absolutely not.
And you're not applying for an I, Class I license, because you need the C to be able to sell these specialty beers and wines?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I would encourage the ownership team and the manager to regularly participate, communicate with Mary Thompson and Dollman Park Neighborhood Association. They took on the old Lynch Park Neighborhood Association. That's why they go out to 16th now, part of what was the Lynch Park, and they get good attendance at their meetings, and Mary and I would say her leadership team are pretty accessible and very interested in knowing what's going on in the neighborhood. So I can assure you that if this passes today and then the commission, all eyes will be on the business to make sure that things are going well, and if not, and I'm hearing about them, then we'll have things to talk about. But for this point, I'm comfortable in the application, the people who are behind the operation, running the operation, and the type of operation that you've presented and committed that they'll be running, so I'd move to approve.
Thank you.
Second, there's no further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for How We Doin' LLC doing business as the Omaha Lounge located at 1505 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today proponents, please.
Yes, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard on item 17? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 17, no lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for New Golden Palace LLC doing business as Golden Palace located at 4040 North 132nd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today proponents, please.
My name is Peng Lee. My address is 8424 West Center Road, Suite 108, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. I'm here representing the New Golden Palace LLC, applying for a Class I liquor license.
Thank you, and just here to answer any questions we might have?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 18, there are no lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Blue Nile Inc. doing business as Blue Nile Corner Store located at 2541 North 20th Street. A's Communication Opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 is today proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Brahana Warkala. I live at 7414 Page Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114, and I apply for Class D liquor license at 2541 North 20th Street, and I'm here to answer any question, if there's any question.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Let me make a couple of comments just before you, just before you leave. My comments weren't necessarily for you, but my comments were for your opposition, because I have a couple of issues with your opposition, quite frankly, but I just want you to recognize and understand that I do have a concern about that corner. There has been more loitering than I would like to see around the area of your neighbor. I would like to not see that on your corner. I would like for you guys to make sure that your area is policed appropriately and that there's no loitering that goes on around there, because that loitering leads to all kinds of bad things that can occur. So, you know, it's just a friendly warning to you at this point that, or a friendly reminder to you at this point that, you know, what you need to do is keep the area around your, around your establishment clear and clean and no loitering around that property. And let me ask you one other question. Have you contacted, or are there any neighbors? I know you contacted, had a Neighborhood Association meeting, but no one came, so I'm assuming that they're okay, the neighbors are okay with your particular establishment.
Yes, we did talk, yeah. Some neighbors, we walk around, and we, one day even, we even passed flyer invites most people who live around to come to the store and talk to us. We didn't even invite you, but you didn't come, so...
Yeah, I know. Why'd you say that out loud? Anyway, thank, I appreciate you, and I just wanted you to...
We do our best, yeah, I promise. We'll do our best to keep it clean.
Thank you, I appreciate it. No lights, is there a motion? Why'd you look at me with that eye, Amy? Moving and seconded, moving and seconded to approve item 19, no lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for NBH Grocery LLC doing business as NBH Grocery located at 1817 North 33rd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 is today proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here with the applicant. This is an application for a Class D, for a grocery operation on North 1817 North 33rd. And what will make this a little bit different is this will also, this, I'm informed by President of the council, this used to be the old American Legion there. There is restaurant capability there, so they will have some restaurant, some pizza delivery, some things like that. We are authorized to say the Neighborhood Association wholeheartedly endorses and supports this application, partly for that reason. This individual is also, he's a transplant from Ethiopia. He's been here in the States for about 21 years. He's a naturalized citizen. He lives in the neighborhood. It was about three blocks away, so I think, I've talked to councilman for President Gray, and I believe he has, we have his support as well, and I think this is an outstanding, the type of thing they need in this neighborhood. So with that, we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Let me say first of all that for my colleagues, the old, the old American Legion was, and I'm sure you remember this, was a scene of a number of homicide shootings, a number of other things that went on there. This is an effort to clean that area up. I got a text message from a couple of the Neighborhood Association presidents today that said we better approve this application, so I'm hoping that there will be someone who will say something so that I can second it, so that we could get this, so that we can get things going here. Thank you, Ms. Melton. It's been moved and seconded, I'm the second, moved and seconded to approve item 20, there are no further lights, and thank you for the work that you've done and will continue to do. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Item 21, an application to consider a special designated liquor license for Second Wind Inc. doing business as Crescent Moon Ale House for an Oktoberfest Beer Garden located at 3578 Farnham Street on September 21st, 2018, from 3:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. and September 22nd, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. with music until midnight each night.
Hello, my name is Candace Gladwin, 4802 Capital Avenue, Omaha, 68131, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
You jumped the gun on me, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? You ready to go right now, aren't you? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, this has become a huge event. If anyone's not been there yet, I encourage you to go. In fact...
This is his 17th year.
And people come from all over the region to this event. The entertainment's fabulous, of course, the environment's incredible. of course, the environment's incredible, and you've kind of outgrown your space, and we tried this year-
Yeah.
Mr. Public Work. We tried to get a twenty-four-hour Farnham Street closure at Thirty-Sixth and Farnham for this event, but, once we show them how well the Farnham Fest can, can happen and manage that short period of closure, then we're coming back for yours, so.
Yes, we hope so, we'll try and do.
We have to remain optimistic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Move to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-one, no lights, roll, no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, a resolution to approve a Big Red Kino satellite location at Broke Down Palace, located at eight-eight-zero-five Maple Street, A's Communication, from Big Red Kino, requesting to withdraw the application.
So motion?
Sooner or later.
Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item twenty-three, a resolution to approve a Big Red Kino satellite location at Molly's Pub, located at eight-five-two-five Park Drive.
Public hearing agenda item number twenty-three is today, proponents please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Katrina Coffey, I'm with Big Red Kino, we're located at one-one-two-four-eight John Galt Boulevard, I have with me today the owner, Teresa, and we're here for an ownership change, they currently have Kino there right now, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers twenty-four through twenty-six were held on August twenty-first, twenty-eighteen.
Motion approved, second.
Moved and seconded to approve items twenty-four through twenty-six, no further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-seven through thirty-three are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Can we remove thirty-three?
And we will remove, uh, item thirty-three from the agenda. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve, second.
Moved and seconded to approve items numbers twenty-seven through thirty-two, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item thirty-three, a resolution to amend, resolution number one-seven-one, passed on February thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, to permit the city to pay fifty percent of the total project costs of improvements for Street Improvement District number six-eight-eight-three, increasing the city's authorized contribution to the costs of improvement by forty-seven-thousand four-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and thirty-two cents, to an amount not to exceed a hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars, and for the remaining costs of improvements for S.I.D. number six-eight-eight-three, be specially assessed upon the properties within S.I.D. number six-eight-eight-three, and I believe we have an amendment of the whole.
Public hearing, the public hearing on agenda item number thirty-three is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just, uh, the reason for the amendment was, um, just that the math wasn't correct in the original proposal, so we had that corrected, and so I'd asked to move the amendment of the whole.
Second.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.